...work session on February 14th, 2019 at 6:00 P.M. Please call the roll.
Councilman Coles. Councilman Dean.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Sharoff.
Fudge allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to be called for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to have any public comment on agenda items only at this time, Coles? Seeing there's none. Other correspondence. Received a letter, was received from the Westmoreland County Food Bank requesting use of a permanent Malle boat launch for the Operation Press Express distribution on Wednesday, September 4th, 2019. And also received a letter from the Westmoreland County Parks and Recreation offering grants to local art organizations and local government entities to assist in supporting local art projects and activities through the local arts grants program. Treasuries report, jury's not here, so I'm potentially cut that in two weeks. Police report, we will also have at our next meeting. As a first reading of the proposed ordinance 1-2019, an ordinance of the Council for the City of Monessen, Westmoreland County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, providing for the assessment of reasonable fines for absences at regular or special meetings of council for the city of Monessen. Like to make a motion to advertise proposed ordinance 1-2019 as required for possible adoption at a regularly scheduled meeting of council.
Second.
And a second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve resolution number 7-2019, a resolution of the Council of the City of Monessen, Westmoreland County, Pennsylvania, authorizing city council to apply for a grant through the Western Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a project as part of the early intervention program and allocates local resources in the amount of 10 percent of the total grant application not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to authorize the settlement of the school district of the City of Monessen's tax appeal for East Gate 11, parcel number 2002040086 at docket number 3573 of 2018 in Westmoreland County Court of Common Pleas, in the fair market value amount of $80,000 for 2017, $105,000 for 2018, and $150,000 for 2019.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve to send a letter of authorization to the Monessen Parks Restoration Group to cut diseased and dead trees, mulch playgrounds, and pear trees, and split rail fence replacement at City Park, subject to receipt of a certificate of insurance and submission of a work schedule prior to beginning the work.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
There will be a library report if anybody wants to see it for the next meeting, as there also will be the financial report. Make a motion to approve transfer of real estate tax funds collected from January 1st, 2019 through January 31st, 2019, to the following funds. General Fund, $5,272.04. Debt Service Fund, $1,969.82. Parks and Recreation, $773.12. And the Library Fund, $205.62.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to WEC Inc. for professional services for construction management and observation for the 2018 Monessen Downtown demolition and site clearance project in the amount of $8,042.80, to be paid out of the capital improvement funds obtained through refinancing of the city's bonds.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve payment to WEC Inc. for professional services for construction management and observation for the 279 Schoonermaker Avenue Emergency Demolition and Site Clearance Project in the amount of $4,371.40, to be paid out of the general fund.
Second.
One second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve partial payment to Rittenhour &amp; Sons Construction Company, Inc. for periodic estimate number five, invoice number MON-006, in the amount of $7,500 for the 2018 Downtown Monessen Demolition and Site Clearance Project, per the recommendation of WEC, Inc., to be paid out of the bond refinancing funds.
Second.
One second on the motion, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I make motion to approve Carlos Spangluth to attend a principals of management bookkeeping training class on February 21st, 2019, at Quality Inn and Conference Center, Somerset, PA, for the cost of $80 plus tolls and mileage at the current IRS rate.
Second.
We have a second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve payment to Cleveland Brothers Equipment Company, Inc. for invoice number SERV-7136134 for the repair of the 2008 Seagrave Pumper Truck.
Second.
We have a second, questions on the motion.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wozzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes. At the next meeting, there will be both a street and a parks reported for January 2019. And also just wanted to bring before you, for those who were at our, I think, two meetings ago, Pastor Tim Bergen spoke to us about a potential business opportunity in the city. And so because of that, they're requesting that the engineer and the city look into redirecting the traffic of the alleyway between Donner and Schoonermaker. They're still, you know, and they're looking into it, investigating, engineers looking to the one, O'Intell, what the cost and the possibility of new signage with Intel. So right now, it's at a planning stage, but just wanted to let you know that that's where I'm at with that.
No, I won't be talking to them.
Yes, and also, we will check with the other businesses, see if they're in agreement with that, you know, see if that's going to affect their business at all. So we're excited about it, really excited about it.
I'm excited about the coffee.
Do you have anything else, please?
No, I don't have.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilman Dean.
I have the code office financials for the month of January. Code Office report, fire report, EMS report, and civic center report. And then I just wanted to, for those who didn't see my update this morning, I spoke with the Water Authority Director of Operations, and he is going to be notifying me on Saturday when the test results get back from DEP. As soon as, as long as those results come back good, I'll be issuing a lift on the boil water van, or boil water advisor.
That's it? So, sir?
I had a meeting with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources regarding pumpkin patch property. Those involved with leading the comprehensive plan put the city in touch with those individuals. It turns out, the city should have never sold that property from the very beginning because they received state and federal funding, created a park, it was always supposed to be a park. So it's a good thing the city got that property back because the consequences could have been pretty bad. They would have had to find another piece of land and build a park from their own money.
Thank you. I'm sure Wayne will have the controls and CDPG reports at our next meeting. Before we get to public comment, I want to publicly thank and express a gratitude for Councilman Dean and Councilwoman Thomas, and Salvation Army, and our police department, and fire department, for the work that they all pulled together during the bitter cold snap we had. I won't say snapped, but the bitter cold, with the warming stations and collaborating. That was all put together extremely quick. Again, a thank out to Chief Smith because he called me and says, "What do you want to do?" And we jumped and tried to do the best we could in a very short notice. Thank God, I don't think anybody needed it, but...
We had three families we were able to assist with feeding well to keep them in their homes, so they didn't need it. And one gentleman was genuinely homeless, and we got him into a long-term shelter. So Dad left our shelter.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you to everybody that was involved because it was such a positive.
It was very good teamwork.
And again, another kudos, I'd like to thank Councilman Dean with Councilwoman Thomas in the background for all the hard work and dedication and Dave blasting out there on Facebook and everywhere else about the updates of the water breaks, not once, not twice, but I believe three times.
A little more than I have, show people time.
I'm going to give you credit for three, that's okay. So, but, you know, it kept the city alive, I mean, kept the information going, what was going on, and everybody had a safe place to know, or at least the buzz got around quickly of what was really happening. There was some confliction at the beginning, and Councilman Dean stood up and made a few phone calls even to the media, and got the facts, the correct facts, out there straight. So, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. We will open it now to public comments on non-agenda items.
Captain Sue from the Salvation Army. We put it on our Facebook, but we did pass a large donation of water that became available. So if anyone in the affected areas needs water, they can just stop by our building, and we will supply them with water as needed until the oil advisory is lifted. And I know there's been water already dropped at high rises, but without administration of that water, the first three people take it all. So we took, we took more water and had someone sit and babysit and hand it out. So, but we do have water available for those who already need it. Secondly, the demo, I talked to Dave through Facebook on that, that's going on there in the corner of Flurton and Schoonermaker. As I was leaving, another big chunk fell out of that building, and if you're walking by, you hear it falling.
Yeah, I brought it up to them, we're going to talk about it after the meeting.
Very good, because I counted at least 20 people walking past that, like they're trying to get from our building to the other side by the phone repair, and on the side where we're tearing down the building, you can't be on the sidewalk.
I appreciate you sending me the pictures. Because I have a picture of it from earlier around noon.
Right.
So I can have the side-by-side comparison.
Yeah, so, but like, I had a teenager helping me today with food pantry, and she said, "I hate coming down there to help you because I have to walk on the street to get to your building." And I said, "Well, whatever you do, don't walk on that side of the street."
Yeah.
And I don't want something to fall off the other building, and they'll be like, "Captain Sue told me to." So, yeah, but I think we need to be really careful of that, because it could, someone could get really injured. And like, we have a lot of people that are curious, a lot of people who aren't standing right by the bench with a book.
And that's a really nice fence they have on.
Yeah, it's, that's...
No, I appreciate it.
And just so everybody knows, we are in progress of getting the traffic light fixed.
Good.
Big one, are you making the right time?
I was hoping you were making the right time. Six o'clock is too early. I'm going to keep asking these questions. First, did you make any progress, your turn there? Determining which out of the Fab 12 businesses that aren't paying their fair share, did you make a specific list? Did you approach them yet? If not, well...
I have the information, I'm not going to approach the tax appeal when it's filed, tax appeal. We've had this conversation, if I come to you and say, "Hey, you're going to pay more taxes on your house," you're going to say, "Oh, my attorney."
Yeah, but I said that because, first of all, let's be realistic. These people were paying much more before, and then mysteriously, it went all the way down, like 80, 90 percent. So what we're asking for is, what's fair is fair, which is jack them back up to some degree, so that the burdens of your budgets are not put on the backs of common people working for a living.
We're looking at it.
Okay, when, did you give us another report? I mean, since December, you said you're looking at it.
Right. This isn't a decision that I'm going to make, you know, at the snap of the fingers. It's not a decision the council is going to make at the snap of the fingers. There's costs involved. It's a business decision.
Do we have to file by when?
At the end of March.
The end of March?
That's the deadline for actually filing.
Okay. Number two, did you people get a snap, a tan note yet? Did that come in?
Yes, we got the tan.
Okay. So at least you got a life preserver.
I won't say that.
Okay, the other thing is, I know that you've been going for the library, you have a liaison, I guess you're going now. Now, the library is not bleeding the public, like the Sewerage Authority or the School Board Authority. Do you have a liaison for these two other agencies, you know, the School Board or the Sewerage Authority, so that you guys could have some say-so, or have some sort of...
Ernie, you're absolutely right, and I would love to go to the School Board, but I don't know if I want to put my foot in that water right now.
Well, I'll go with you if you're...
I don't, I don't mean for anything that would come up, I just mean that this, this job takes up too much of my life, and my wife will kill me if I start to add one more thing.
Because I go usually, by myself. I mean, they're stacked with their, you know, schoolteachers and 18 people on their board, and I'm the only one that's talking, trying to get them to tighten their budget.
Okay, well...
It would be nice to have our other two to help us, though.
I mean...
Because Ernie, a lot of us are already, like, I'm a liaison for redevelopment authority, I do the refuse...
Okay, but the sewage is the other one.
Right, I know, it's just...
They keep charging fees on every, they're going to increase the fees again this year. So...
Can I, can I interject here and explain the difference? The library is a city, it's a city board, that's, that's our board. The authorities, the sewage authority is standalone entity. We do have, the city does have representation on that board, they have three members. The School Board, they're, it's the same thing, they're, they're their own entity. There is no liaison to the School Board.
Well, there shouldn't be, because they, they...
Let me finish, I mean, that could be something that maybe council takes a look at, says, "Hey, maybe we should work together, you know, maybe council can have a liaison, maybe a School Board member could have, or the School Board could have a liaison here."
Yeah, because between the School Board and the City Council, people are looking at eight, maybe nine millage increase coming around this June. And they got till May, or they really got till June, but around May, they're going to determine how many millages they're going to hit us. And the public is just sitting there, you know, they're getting slapped here on the council, they're not going to get slapped by the School Board.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the School Board voted to raise taxes above the index.
Yeah. Well, that's why, somebody should...
I actually wouldn't mind being the liaison for the School Board.
Yeah.
That's something we're going to have, we'd have to approach the School Board.
It's going to take these two people, because they are really, I mean, that's like a kangaroo call, I think you guys are bad, but they got one notch higher.
You love us, sir. What do you mean, we're bad?
Well, as far as getting away with whatever you want to...
Hey, oh, I got a present for you.
A present?
Valentine's present.
A Valentine's present.
Valentine's Day present. Everything you ask for about Best Medical's stuff that they make and what all they do.
Okay, now this doesn't mean we're going to go dating.
Not going to dinner.
No, this is just the first thing. There you go.
Okay, I'll pick it up. I got one more big question now. I was kind of hurt, talking about Best Medical. I asked you people at the last meeting, if you know anything about this Indian guy coming with his troop. And nobody here told me, "Oh, yeah, we were here three hours ago, and we took photo ops over here at the building." And that was kind of disingenuous from you guys, especially when you say it for transparency. And you weren't just throwing a curveball at me, you're also throwing it at the public. When you're not being straightforward, saying, "Yes, his troop was here."
Okay, let me answer that right now for you.
Yeah.
Okay. That happened, the reason it happened, was because of all the rumors, the bull that goes out there, people making up things, people talking, doing all this, and quite frankly, you know, I approached the media five minutes before the meeting, they didn't even know. So this was not a pre-planned thing for them, whatever, okay? But I felt it was important to give the City of Monessen and the citizens an unbiased, completely unbiased, unobjective account of what was happening. And there's no better way, in my opinion, is I wasn't involved in it, nobody else was involved in it, the media was just there.
Because they look at it from, not just my point of view. The next morning, they had photos inside, outside the building. Mont Valley had it on Friday, Monday was the Herald-Stansbury turn, Tuesday was the Washington Observer. All they did was flip-flop the photos.
I can't help you there.
No, the thing is, it was like a canned, you know, presentation.
There was nothing canned about it.
Well, it was, it came out.
Well, no, it was not how you come out, and I would let the newspaper sit there and comment on that, that I would think they would feel objected, that it was something canned, it was something staged.
Then why didn't they say something when I asked? Because I, I was looking at everybody in the audience, "Does anyone know about them being here in Monessen?"
No, I was the one that set the meeting up.
Again, it was...
I got plenty of news out.
No, but I set, I set the meeting up.
I asked for some information.
And the news media was invited to the meeting, Mark was there.
That's fine.
The reporter from the Valley Independent was there.
Yes.
They took pictures, they talked to the attorney from Best Medical for a couple hours.
But I asked a question, what they knew about it, and they said this. And that's disingenuous.
They have the information, they have the information there. And Tony, the mayor, was given a flash drive of everything they're doing. Am I correct, Tony, I gave you the flash drive the other day? And the booklet's there that he's going to give you, tells you all about Best Medical.
Okay, well...
The man, the attorney made a special trip in here, I called him. In fact, I called Chris Smith.
That's fine.
And he was in British Columbia. And I told him about the problems they have in Donny, about the people objecting and they're complaining about nuclear waste and stuff in that building. And what happened was, he said, "I can't get here." He says, "I'll have Jim Brady call you, our attorney." He called me, I said, "Could you please come down and be here for the meeting, for the council meeting?" And he says, "Yes." And he came down. And that's whenever I told Tony after that, "Won't happen."
I think the public was also, should have been informed so they can have their questions asked, if they have questions, which I think they did.
They'll come back, they will come back and let you ask every question in the world whenever things progress, or there, there's nothing, this whole thing was for one reason or one reason only, to squelch the rumors that there's nuclear waste and Little Green Men and whatever down in that basement. That's what it was, because you heard it on Facebook, you heard it everywhere else, there was public comment out here, and I know some of you look like you have deer in your headlights. No, it happened.
I'm not deer in my headlights.
I wasn't, did I say your name, sir?
No.
Okay.
My comment.
Okay, my comment stays. Okay. But the thing was, people started rumors, and they needed to be officially squelched.
That's why I wanted to ask a question, but I didn't get the opportunity. Well, when do you think they'll be back again? When are they going to make a second? Does he know?
Whenever I call him, I'll make that decision.
Okay, so I think it's only up to the ex-mayor to call him.
Watch out for the new mayor.
Well, the new mayor's not around. Hey, he's the acting new mayor that's popping there.
I will work, I will be in touch. We will, not I, I'm sorry, all of us in council will be actually going to find out what the next step is. And nothing has happened yet, nothing has moved forward. The DEP permit was only a preliminary start, okay? Nobody's knocking down buildings, nobody's adding anything. It's actually going to probably be, I'm guessing, a long period before it even gets off the ground. Probably a good year.
Well, okay, but I hope we get to talk to them before that year ends up.
You will get to talk to them many times.
Well, I just want to...
I know, I fully expect them that whenever something may progress next stage for them, that they have a representative here that they can address council.
Yeah, there will be a zoning hearing.
Yeah, there'll be all of that.
Yeah, it'll be public.
They're going to have to present everything, we're not going off and meeting them somewhere. They're going to do it in front of council, in front of everybody else, and everybody can ask the questions at that time. I know about as much as you do, seriously, with that brochure. That's about as much as I honestly know.
Okay, because if you're going to get me down again, the next time, I'm going to be suggesting Finney becomes acting...
I can't do that, my wife will kill me.
You're going to trip, watch.
I just want to get my pass.
There you go, buddy.
All right.
You're welcome. I promised you I'd get you that information.
That's a really gift to give.
I know.
I want to thank Councilwoman Thomas for...
I have another one.
...tending and participating in redevelopment authority meeting. I appreciate your input and looking forward to the next meeting, as we're working together as one council group.
Any other comments? Name and address, please.
How come everyone else can just speak up?
Name and address, please.
How come everyone else...
I am asking for the third time, name and address, please. Everybody that comes up there...
Paul Gregor.
Everybody that comes up there...
If I stand back there, I don't have to say my name?
No, we'll tell you, ask you to come to the podium.
Okay, why doesn't he have to come to the podium?
Lou Maverick is 14, Westmoreland Drive.
But you're not at the podium, Mr....
You're not at the podium.
Thank you. I know where I'm at.
I'm aware where you're at.
Well, I am, too.
You made a motion to pay the Cleveland Brothers Equipment Company. What was the amount?
Thirty-three hundred dollars, not including the tow. I think the tow is $4.50, we weren't sure yet.
Okay, I have another question. The, I see that this is recorded, put out there by the Mont Valley Independent. And is there any recording that the council makes? Okay. I've looked at some of your minutes, they don't seem to be complete.
I do word for word, no. I do mostly subjects.
I just noticed that.
Yeah, subjects of the...
It's not required to be transcribed word for word, word for word, I would...
Oh, I would understand that if you'd have minutes that were books.
Yeah.
Just a comment. Last meeting I was here, apparently Lou, something else, you're acting sort of as the...
You what?
You're acting as the go-between, between this Best Medical and the council?
I was asked.
Pardon me?
I was asked.
Oh, you were asked to be this, just, just asked.
Yeah.
The, I don't have a problem with that kind of arrangement, I was just asking if you were the go-between.
Well, I have direct contact with Christian and Best Medical, I'm the one that brought him into town, so naturally, I have a good rapport with him and his, him and his legal staff.
So you're actually kind of working on behalf of Best Medical?
No, I'm not working behalf of him, I'm working behalf of the city.
Oh, okay, you're working on behalf of the council?
I want to see what's good for the city. No, I'm working, like I said, I'm on the redevelopment authority, I'm still...
That makes sense.
I'm still doing everything that I can to help the city.
That makes sense, that makes sense. Last meeting that I was here, I listened to some comments that were made concerning Matt Chirrall. The mayor, Matt Chirrall. And by the acting mayor. And the comment was made that something about Matt Chirrall had said that, something about sexual discrimination as far as wages. I wouldn't know if it was sexual discrimination, but there's definitely a gender gap.
You'll have to ask the mayor, the mayor made the comment, we didn't.
No, you said there wasn't any. Your comment was that there wasn't any, and he didn't understand what he was talking about.
I still don't understand what he's talking about.
Well, I'm gonna try to explain it for you.
How can you explain something that he commented on?
Well, because it's kinda obvious if you look at the facts.
Are you speaking for the mayor?
No, I would never speak for the mayor. I'm speaking for myself in the fact that I can understand what he said, even though I disagree with his actions. I still understand what he said.
That being, please?
That being was that there is a gender gap.
And how is that?
Well, let's see. We have a woman that worked for the city of Menneson for twenty-five years. She makes seventeen dollars an hour. Who's a male, who makes, who's been here less than, well, less than seven years, and he makes twenty dollars an hour. There is a gap.
Are they doing the exact same job?
Hmm, no. However, however, that's like comparing, you're saying that someone who handles, say, four million dollars a year isn't worth as much as somebody who drives a truck, runs a weed blacker, does physical labor. You're going to tell me that someone who does accounting, payroll?
So what is your point, Mr. Gregor?
My point is quite simple, there is a gender gap.
In your opinion?
No, in fact.
No.
No, in fact.
If I could, if I could jump in here, these contracts are negotiated, both sides have to agree. It's not council unilaterally saying, "We're gonna pay females less than males."
Oh.
Two sides, take two sides for that agreement.
Joe, Joe, I have no, I have no qualms with agreeing to that, because that is the absolute truth. You know, council negotiated with the union, and the union set their rates, but that doesn't mean that there's not a gender gap, just because the union didn't do their due diligence, or felt that the work that the females did wasn't equal to what the males did. I mean, facts are facts. You have, you have money that's collected by the city, and it's just through, just take the treasurer's office. How much money is collected here, each and every year, handled, and accounted for down to the penny? Do you know?
We'd have to look, I would imagine it's probably...
Your council finance, that should be also top of your head.
Well, they collect the school district and county money as well.
Yeah, they also collect parking meters, they collect a lot of that.
Yeah, but that should, you should, you should be able to give me a general idea. I'm not saying give me exact down to the penny, that's not your job.
Are you talking in checks, you're talking?
No, I'm talking overall.
Well, you're collecting the taxes, so I'm gonna imagine that would be, oh, at least over two?
Over two seventy-four.
But the treasurer's office, over the course of a year, collects approximately between six and eight million dollars.
Okay, that's four of ours in...
Yes. Yes. And the city of Menneson also pays what, as far as paying for the treasurer's office? What's the percentage?
A third. It's a third.
A third. So the county pays a third. The school board pays a third.
And we pay a third.
And you pay a third. Okay, but I'm sorry, I run a nonprofit. I know we're all, the work is involved, and it's not just out in the cemetery when I'm digging a grave, it's not just the weed blacking, it's also in the bookkeeping. So when you sit there and you tell me there's not a gender gap, there is, and it's not your fault. It's the previous council, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying it's you guys, because you weren't here, but there is a gender gap.
So Don, let me run something by you, just to throw it out there. Where I work, and it's, I don't know if it's, it may not, in some instances and others, some things it may be a gender, but it's not always that, it's your job, job that you're doing, just listen to this. I've been in my agency for over twenty years. I'm barely making a little bit over forty thousand. Someone coming in, doing another job, okay, they don't value people, okay? I work with, I serve people, I'm a social worker, okay? So our country doesn't value people, they value machines, they value computers. Somebody coming in doing a computer job will make more than I would, coming in doing my job, making more now than I'm making after twenty years. So it's not always a gender thing that you may be referring to, it may be actually just your job. Because we complain about that all the time. I said, "Twenty years," and I'm only, my girlfriend lives in Maryland, and she'll make a hundred thousand, she goes, "Lois, you're not even making fifty yet." And so it's not always that, it's more so can just be the job you're in. And our, our society does not value people, it values job, it values computers, it values cranes, it values operators out there. So it's not always that, you know, you gotta look at everything.
Oh, I, I have...
Because I'm telling you, I'm in that same situation, and it's not, we have male social workers, we have females. So we're all making the same in the field I'm in, but there's other people doing something else that's been there less than me, maybe three or four years, making more than me.
I'd also like to bring to the point too, an hourly wage isn't the only thing that is calculated whenever you find out what somebody's making any different than when you're going for a job, okay? You could be making forty dollars or sixty dollars an hour, but if your benefits are nothing, you're gonna pay for it in the end, because you're continuing to pay it. So I would say, as far as that goes, you would need to actually, and I don't need to bring this out in public to you, because you know damn well what I'm talking about. The benefits of the street and the clerical are absolutely fantastic.
Absolutely.
That can't be found anywhere else in the private or business sector.
Never.
And quite frankly, not even government pays that kinda stuff. So when you wanna talk about that, please make sure that you add everything, because I would make one comment, if you would please let me say it, is, last time you were here, you sat at that pillar, and you made a comment about, oh, that it's not true about healthcare isn't for life, because when you retire, there's a Plan B. Medicare pays one, and then there's Plan B.
Yes.
Well, what you didn't continue on farther was, the city pays for that Plan B, and any deductibles and anything that's occurred that you would have to do yourself, had you had your own insurance.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct, but the point I was trying to make there was that the rates dropped dramatically.
But it doesn't matter.
But it doesn't.
Your cost out of pocket, sir, is zero. And matter of fact, your cost out of pocket is zero, because you're also on your wife's insurance from the city.
You're right, I am.
So you're enjoying the benefits that what she has also, so quite frankly, you're sitting there pretty good also.
Yeah.
So why would you complain about that?
I'm not complaining about it. I'm just stating the fact that you said there wasn't a gap in rates.
When I started, there wasn't a gap, is because I was coming back to the mayor and saying, "Make your statement clear of what you're talking about," okay? He's made a lot of threatening statements out there about things.
I won't go in there about threatening statements.
Well, if you're saying about, there's gender and pace gaps, he's kinda accusing in some things right there.
Well, unfortunately for him, and I don't think he's clear about a lot of things, but, but that has nothing, what he thinks and what he says really has no bearing, as far as I'm concerned.
I appreciate that, but his comments, when they go out to the paper, are what could be looked at as a reflection of the city, of this council, and maybe of the people in this city, and they're reporting just in what he says.
That's why I made it quite clear that it wasn't you folks
And I think...
that were responsible for that. I'm actually, I'm more, I'm thinking more of the blame would be to the, towards the unions, because they didn't do their diligence negotiating for their people. And let's face it...
He did a heck of a job, I think.
Excuse me?
I think they did a heck of a job for their people, judging from what he just said, as far as benefits and...
They, but the sky is the limit.
We're gonna have a freeway here, or what?
You can if you want to.
I don't really want to, but we can.
I'll give it to you.
Come on, guys.
One to die, please.
You have the floor.
I thought so, but it seemed like it.
Well, I didn't want to...
Anyways.
We're bringing it back.
Anyways, I'm not, I'm not gonna beat on this, because it is Valentine's Day.
Three minutes.
And I can continue this as long as, back and forth, but there's no point to it. I just wanted to make sure you all were aware, excuse me. This has been a hell of a season.
Did you drink, sir?
Actually, I don't mind.
Tony got you a Valentine's Day present, like I got Ernie.
Yeah, but anyways, there is a gender gap, and I don't blame the current council at all. I do know that it wasn't done the way it should have been. But back in the day, let's face it, what was, clerical was considered woman's work. However, clerical is what keeps a place running, just like that lady right there who's clerical. If it wasn't for her, the city wouldn't be operating. So, you know, I'm sorry, you don't get paid enough to take what you have to take. You have my sincere sympathies. But there is a gender gap, it's not your people's fault, but, you know, just don't try to hide it. And as far as my insurance coverage, I could tell you circumstances of why my wife works here in the first place, if it's immaterial, but it's sufficient to say that she took a pay cut to come here. But that's neither here nor there, that's a burden of having to occur, you can't undo it. So I just wish, wanna wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
I'll be here next month.
So will you? No, this month.
Thank God. That's right, this month, we still have one. Thank God, so many East Street.
Because if we're not here, you're not gonna be here.
I'll be standing outside waiting.
You won't even get in the door, because there won't be no need.
All right, have a good evening.
You too, Don.
Do we have any other comments?
You gotta go to the podium.
Please. State your name and address.
Lou Madbreakers, 14 West Morgan Drive, in reference to gender gap. Contracts are negotiated, all right? Two sides sit down, exchange proposals, then they reach an agreement. If there's a problem with a gender gap, it's not the city, it's the union. They was responsible. And if you got a problem with that, go to the National Labor Relations Department. But don't blame this council or blame me, because I was the one that negotiated the Just so you understand, gender gap or women's gap got nothing to do with this council or with our council when I was in office. Go see Aspen, that's the union that negotiated for the union.
Thanks, Lou.
Rosmarie Zachowski, 229 H. L. Seven. I just wanna address the gender gap idea. I work in recruiting, I know how it works. Speak up. People are hired to do a job. It doesn't matter if you're a female doing the job or a male doing the job. If there was a male working, collecting taxes, they would be making the same amount as the female, as per the CBA. Same thing if there was a female working in the streets department. They would be making what the male is making, as per the CBA. That's the way it works. It's not discrimination, it's by job. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I wanna say something. I try not to say things at these meetings beyond what we're handling, as far as our...
You gotta say it.
Lois, Lois, I'm joking. I know Lois Thomas Ray said with me. I try to just let us address what needs to be addressed at the meetings.
Three minutes.
But whether we wanna admit it or not, there's more to this than what everybody's saying. Everyone wants to skirt around the issues and everything else. We are not gonna get any further along as a city if we keep fighting each other, and that's all it is. It's a fight from two sides, which I've never had a part of and never wanna be a part of. This shouldn't be, this, we are never gonna get any further, we don't stop this.
You're right.
It's continuing.
I agree.
Meeting after meeting after meeting, I sit here, I says, "Don't they get it? We've been, we have, I have to say, because I have, they have lived in this and done this, year after year after year after, after council, after council, after council." And we are continuing to stay in the same shape we are in if we don't stop this. We gotta stop fighting each other, that's all it is, every meeting is a battle. People coming here to battle every meeting, and that's why we're not getting anywhere, and we're gonna fall. It says, "United we stand, divided we fall." And we are falling, Menneson, and it's because of ourselves. And if we don't stop it, I'm serious, we are gonna fall. A lot of folk complain about going Act Forty-Seven, it'll happen, you fall, we will no longer exist, because we won't even have anything, or everything's gonna fall apart, it is falling, and it will continue to fall as long as we stay divided. I'm telling you. We are so divided, and until we come together, that's the only way we're gonna come together and get out of this hole that we are in, that's the only way we're gonna make any progress. I'm telling you. So continue doing what you're doing, and it's gonna continue the same way, it's gonna continue to get worse. It will not get any better until we stop this. Every meeting, folk come here to fight and battle and find and pick fault with one another. It's gotta stop. We're not kids, come on! We're gonna act like kids every day, because we want our way, it shouldn't be our way, it has to be us together, our way as a group, not your way, not my way. Come on! I wanna see Menneson go forward, I wanna make, I wanna great Menneson, but it's not gonna happen if we keep doing this every single time we come together.
The old factions and the old sides are done.
It's gotta stop. We are not here for that. The new, we are not here, these new folk that I'm working with, we don't care. We're trying to make it the best that we can for Menneson, that's all we're trying to do, but we're coming up against the wall. We are working, anybody comes to see us, we, if they come with an idea, we're open to it, we say, "Let's try it, let's do it." We don't, I mean, we got folk coming from whoever says that faction, that faction, we don't care, if they're coming here to try to do something for the good of Menneson, we're working with, we don't care whose side you are on. We're working with you, because it should be one side, not two.
Should be.
All right? I'm just, I'm, I just get tired of sitting here and watching y'all go at each other. I say, "Why are you going?" It's like a family fighting each other. When I was raised, we weren't like, "If we got whoopings for fighting each other." We got whoopings because we fought each other. My family of ten brothers and sisters, not one day is gone by that I've never not spoken to my, one of my brothers and sisters, not ever been on odds and ends with, because we weren't allowed. My family said, family, my dad and mom said, "Family's the best thing going for you, don't ever let me see you, you need your family." We're family. We gotta stop fighting. I wish my mom and dad were still here, because I'd have them whooping each and every one of you. I would. We need to really think about this, okay? Okay?
This council's gotta think, this council's gotta think about Act Forty-Seven. This city should have been in Act Forty-Seven years ago, and didn't do it. All you're doing is prolonging the agony. And you know, you got the, you got the school coming up, where they're gonna be raising taxes again. You raise taxes on the people in Menneson to maintain the status quo. Mayor Roszczowski, you said that a couple meetings ago. All this, this six mil increase is only gonna be to maintain the status quo. In the meantime, the streets are gonna continue to get bad, the sewers, and everything else. The city should have been in Act Forty-Seven soon as I went into office, and I couldn't get him into it. And that's where they belong. And you do the right thing, and that is the right thing, because you can't continue to do what you're doing, and what we did, and don't work. You can't put out more than you take in. Don't work, nowhere.
We're bleeding. Whether you all like it or not, we're bleeding. And there's no tourniquet that's gonna stop it. I said it last year, I said it September, October, November, December, I said it was truthful with everybody about the tax increase, about it's gonna, we're gonna be in the same place, it's barely gonna maintain everything. We're gonna be there.
You're there now. Anthony, if you're not, if you're not looking at these twelve businesses that you can collect some money...
Ernie, that, again, it takes...
Well, they're in the street, man.
Stop, it takes time, okay? It doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah, but that's your parachute.
It doesn't happen...
That's the parachute for Menneson.
Ernie, Ernie, it doesn't happen overnight.
I didn't say that.
Okay?
But I'm saying that you don't have to go to Act Forty-Seven if you could collect three hundred thousand dollars every year from these other businesses that got their fees reduced years ago.
Do you really think that? Do you think three hundred thousand would just have no...
Well, it'd straighten out a lot of stone.
It wouldn't touch, it wouldn't fix everything, trust me right now.
What, you're gonna keep loading the budget like the school board?
You got one, you got one option, that's all it is, Act Forty-Seven, that's all that you could do. And you're not doing it.
Look, the thing is, I don't wanna say this.
Before he finishes, back to the battling thing, I mean, me and Ernie are good now. We all gotta be like him. I mean, how long did we argue with each other and yell at each other?
He's your Valentine now.
During our first honeymoon, we had fights. Didn't we straighten, did that?
Exactly. I believe a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Gregor, I believe you made the comment about things that have happened in the past. And to look and see what things have happened in the past. And there's the old adage, and I'm not gonna say it's always right or wrong, that you need to learn from your mistakes in the past. But also, I've said this, and Judy knows this very well to me, when I'll say something and something will come in and I'll say, I don't care. I don't give a shit what happened in the past. I care about right now because I'm not living in the past. I can't change what happened in the past. My responsibility up on this council with the rest of my councilwomen and men and our solicitor are to fix what the nightmare is right now. Okay, and trust me, it's a horror story.
It's because of the past that we don't have a future.
And there's a lot of reasons for that, and we've talked about it many times. And trust me, those gentlemen back there right now are busting their butts to work with us with the state for the early invention plan to see if we can save it. Okay? That's what we're doing. All right, it's gonna take time, we're going to see if we can do it. We're gonna give it the old college try of one big, yes, we're gonna try to do it without going to Act Forty-Seven.
What do they propose, Act Forty-Seven?
No, Ernie, we've talked about this, you've gotta make it to meetings before quarter after six, so to see what's going on. But again, we are busting our butts every day to try to solve problems. And I guarantee you, nobody has a clue except for the individuals up here to know what the nightmare is every day in this city. You may hear a couple, you may hear a couple, you know what's going on here. Trust me, you have no clue what that rest of the nightmare is every day. This phone rings off the hook for her all day long and problems. This job is not a picnic. Okay, and again, not taking anything on ourselves, we're up here, we know what we have to do. But we've been doing the job of five people. So I would appreciate when people start to come up here and jump on our butts for things. Remember, you want to talk about staff and things like that and this and that, well, here's a perfect example of one. And we can't change it, we can't hire somebody else to sit in that seat or that seat way down there. It can't change. And none of you can change it until it comes into fruition in 2021. There's not a damn thing you can do. So you're asking us to pull miracles out of our butts, which we're gonna try to do. And we're the only ones for the next how many years? It's the way it is. I don't like it, trust me. Trust me. I've watched this, Mary Jo's council, I was there with my wife, we went to all lose for four years. When I ran, I never expected this, I never wanted this. But it's what's handed to us. And how many times have I sat here with, with everybody asking, we need your help? We need all your helps. But we're not gonna do it.
The three of us aren't gonna quit on you like the other two do.
I think that's evident by now. And then again, where do you know what you have to do? We can't take a vacation on a council meeting, we can't get sick, or God forbid if we do get sick or something happens because there's no quorum? How are you supposed to do business like that? How? If you have an answer, please tell me, I would greatly want to hear it.
What you should do, you should take them two chairs and burn them.
No, that's destruction of city property.
This way they can't come back. And if this council, if they ever try to come back, and if this council accepts them, you know what, you know better than they are. They, they should not, they should not be able to come back. Yeah, well then you don't have to accept them. You know, you're in uncharted waters right now. You know what, you do whatever they're doing, then let them cry.
Anybody else have any comments, please?
If I can, Tim Bergen, pastor of the Christian Center Church, who are working on bringing a business into the community. I know we've gone down a pretty dark road here, but I, I wanna...
Happy Valentine's Day.
Well, no, what I wanna do is only encourage you. We're coming in trying to bring a business into the community. And, you know, I, I haven't worked in this community, I was raised in the Mon Valley, but didn't really work in, in Manassas. But my experience has been that the three different factions that I've worked with, Lou and you guys and Mary Jo, have all one thing in common, you want to see in your own ways the best for the city. There's a real heart, there's a real passion, there's a real compassion for the people of this city. Whether the people in the city actually appreciate it or not, there is, we've seen it in everyone we've talked with. And I, I just wanna encourage you, I know there's a boatload of things that you're, you're up against, all the politics, all the things that are going on, the tax base not being strong enough, I get all that, I understand that. But my experience in working with churches that have been broken and bringing them back from the brink of non-existence to a place of help, and, and it is, is just this, I want to encourage you with this. Dream big. Because as long as you're focused in on, on just the problems, then that's all you're gonna focus in on. Bible says it this way, so a man thinks, so he is. And as you think about just focusing on the problems, problems are just gonna get worse and worse. I want to challenge you to dream big. We've got some opportunities with new businesses coming into town. You know, I don't know all the deal about this, this company, this best company or whatever it is. But, but if things like that are beginning to be on the burner, I want to try to encourage you to kind of lift your vision a little higher and look and say, okay, this is what my dream is, dare to dream, this is what my dream is, and let's see how we can get all these other things. Let's see how we can get, you know, Lou's vision working together, Mary Jo's vision working together with you guys, and, and just seeing how it can work. Because my experience once again, and I apologize for being so personal about this, my experience has been coming into this city is I've got nothing but, but people cooperating and saying, listen, how can we help you? What can we do? What can we make a difference? And, and everybody from Lou and, like I said, you and Mary Jo have all said, listen, let's work on this together, let's make this happen, let's try to do this. And that to me, I see the heart of the city in each one of you. I see what your passion is and your drive, it's different. And you can make the city, you can turn the city around, I don't know what these other guys are talking to you about, but just your passion and your drive to make the city turn around and just lift your vision a little higher. So a man thinks, so he is, dream big. And then let everything else be focused in on settling based on that dream. So I just want to encourage, okay? We've had enough stuff here tonight, I encourage you, okay?
Anyone else? Have a motion to adjourn, please?
You didn't have enough?
Have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.